We also need to consider our county employees who we're forcing to continue to deal with this. When they have other things that they need to be doing. And every time we extend, every time we say give them more time, give them more time. We're setting a precedent for future situations. As well as requiring our county employees to spend their time after hours coming to meetings here, as well as using their time during the day when they could be doing other things, revisiting the same issue over and over. And you guys know as well, you guys know as well as anybody, I am, I am a private business person. And I don't believe in wasting time. And I just make that as a statement.
About the only thing I'd say about, you know, based on what your motion was, you know, 30 days if it hadn't been cleaned up, 30 days the abatement goes into effect. That'd be my opinion.
Well, you said even if we ruled on the abatement tonight, there's 20 days, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I would make the motion, we go 30 days. If nothing's done at that time, the abatement will start.
If the problem is not completely corrected.
If it's not cleaned up.
So are we saying, and this is just me for clarification, you know, and I'm not trying to pick on anybody and, and I'm, you know, doesn't matter who it is. So at the end of 30 days, we'll revisit this. If the problem is not corrected, not if there is progress made, if the problem is not corrected, there will be abatement. Is that correct, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Without due respect, Mr. Chairman, we have a motion on the floor that's being discussed. We'd have to make a ruling on that motion one way or the other before we could go into a second motion, I believe.
Or you can withdraw it.
You could withdraw it.
Okay, I withdraw the first motion. And we will restate with the second motion to have cleanup done in 30 days, or we proceed with the abatement. Is that good?
Second.
Are you considering this a nuisance?
Yeah, the nuisance.
With 30 days?
Yeah, 30 days, our next meeting. Okay, have a motion in a second.
Mr. Chairman, if I'm not mistaken, I believe this is the one that Commissioner Pendle had.
Yeah.
To show that's on the record.
Commissioner Pendle is recused from the nuisance hearing.
Due to a business, business relationship, correct?
Right, mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, I would entertain a vote, raise your right hand on, in favor. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to our next item. Number three will be a public hearing for text amendment 22-1 Martin Moretz. I'd recognize Scott Berson from the COG, and looks like maybe Allison Adams, not sure who's really here. If you want to come on up. We need to make a motion, I'm making, is the motion to open the public hearing for the text amendment 22-1.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor? Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Okay, we need to swear in.
Not for this one, yeah.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. The business here is a text amendment that would allow accessory structures. So these are things like garages, sheds, storage buildings, things like that, in front of the building line of a property. A little bit of context here, the reason this came about was the applicant, Mr. Moretz, has a pretty big lot, pretty big lot, wants to put a swimming pool in front of his house where there had been one previously. He's not able to do that because our current regulations say you can't have an accessory structure in front of your house. It has to be to the sides or to the back. So he submitted an application, paid the fees, submitted the application to amend the text to say that you could have accessory structures in front of your house. The way that I interpreted it and wrote it was in the RA 20 zoning, so the rural area of the county, on lots three acres or larger, that you would be allowed to have an accessory structure in front of your building, but not in the front setback. So you still have to have, you know, a 30-foot buffer or something like that before you can put the building. You can't put it like right in front of the road. So that's, that's basically what this was. I asked around at a couple other municipalities that kind of have rural areas, a good number of them have similar ordinances like this. You know, the staff says that this is a pretty reasonable request for, you know, the rural areas of the county, you know, loosening property rights, you know, to give people more freedom with their land in these rural areas. A lot of times people want to build barns in certain places, you know, they have big rural lots and want to build, just to put a storage building close to, you know, where they're doing stuff. And we find that this is a reasonable request. The only thing, we did take us the planning board, planning board did approve this. They did want to make a small change to the text just to make sure that it's only in county zoning. So to make sure, you know, it says in Alexander County, on lots of three acres or more, yada, yada, to say, just to clarify that it's only in county zoning. And that was their recommendation for a slight change in the text.
Okay. So this, he does have at least three acres?
Yeah, he has a lot.
Okay. Okay. Anyone in the audience that wants to speak is public hearing? All right. Make a motion that we close a public hearing for text amendment 22-1 Martin Moretz.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second. Any questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor of closing the public hearing, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the changes as stated to zoning ordinance 154-071, location of accessory buildings pertaining to RA 20 zoning in Alexander County zoning areas only, on lots of three acres or more.
Okay, we have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion or question?
I have a question.
Okay.
So if we have a planned subdivision, and the lots are three acres or more, I would assume that if there's language in the restrictions and the covenants, then that would supersede, you'd go with the most demanding?
Correct.
Okay.
Any questions, last gentleman?
Mr. Chairman, so I would, I mean, this is, Mr. Pendle, I mean, Commissioner Pendle, and not that I know, I'm saying, I'm stating this as a question. I assume this would only be when an individual tract or an individual lot is over three acres.
That's right.
So if there were a subdivision, you know, if 50 acres were subdivided into lots, the key would be that each individual lot be a minimum of three acres.
Yeah, that's right.
Which I, you know, which I think, you know, when you, when you end up in court, intent typically is heavily weighted. So, and I think that is the intent, you know, the intent of this, of this amendment.
Yeah, if it was, and if it was subdivided into a smaller lot, whatever structures were on there would become non-conforming as well, so, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, all in favor, but raising your right hand? Okay, motion carries, Vanessa. Thank you, Dustin. Just stand still, you're up again.
Yeah.
Okay, item number four, public hearing, text amendment 22-2, Senate Bill 300, SL 2021-138. I recognize Dustin Millsat. Do we have to open up? Or Scott? You're Scott.
I'm Scott.
Okay.
There's been a lot of us recently.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, need to open up the public hearing, I make a motion.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second, all in favor? Okay, motion carries. Go ahead, sir.
All right, so this one is, in, last year, in September, Governor Roy Cooper passed legislation, legislature passed legislation that prohibits local governments from enforcing certain rules, certain laws criminally. One of those things that counties and localities can't enforce criminally anymore is land use regulations. So basically that means that in our zoning code, in the subdivision code, wherever it says that someone can be charged criminally or with a misdemeanor, those are all non-enforceable anymore. And so basically, all this text amendment is, is taking out those parts of the code so that we're brought into compliance. They are, they're not enforceable anymore. They're basically just dead letters in the code as of this moment, so we're just taking them out. As long as we're adding another text amendment anyway, we're just going to do it all kind of at once, get those out of there to clear up any confusion. This is something that pretty much every municipality and county in the state is having to do, just by rote. So that's all what this one is. You can still do civil penalties, but just not criminal. And I've kept the civil penalties in there, if they were in there.
Okay, all right. Anyone in the audience that wants to, any question? It's public hearing. He's clarified, I think, real good what, what it is.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say, I had no idea that you could be in prison for no more than 30 days for a zoning violation. I think that's interesting.
Yeah, it is. I hadn't heard that till.
I didn't know that.
When I was looking through this, so.
Pretty, pretty rare.
And I have actually looked at the zoning ordinance, but I missed the part about, you know, potentially going to jail, so.
Okay, I make a motion to close public hearing for text amendment 22-2.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor of closing hearing, raise your right hand. Okay, hearing's closed. An entertaining motion to accept the text amendment as given to us by Scott. Text amendment 22-2, Senate Bill 300.
Mr. Chairman, if nobody else wants to. I make a motion that we approve the amendments to section 154.274 and 154.355 of the Alexander County zoning ordinance, and section 157.012 of the subdivision regulations to decriminalize land use violations in accordance with Senate Bill 300, SL 2021-138.
Second. Okay, have a motion in a second. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, but raising your right hand. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Scott. Moving on to our next item, item number five, Alexander County broadband expansion PowerPoint update. I'd recognize Nick Stewart and David Moose compliance and procurement specialist. Thank you, gentlemen.
Good evening, Commissioners. Hope you are all having a good week so far.
Yes.
Just wanted to provide you a bit of an update on the progress that we've made in the county so far. If you would, go to the next slide. We started off this year with some maintenance and repairing and replacing some equipment. The pictures that you see there, it was actually snowing and raining while climbers were up there, very grateful for their commitment to our project. So we were able to install the final piece of equipment that the county's permitting us to do so on Lenny's Mountain Tower. It's the back hall radio that's going to serve Stony Point. We also had to replace a tower, or a radio that's going back to Ellendale, and we also replaced a switch at the bottom of the tower that was powering the equipment. Next slide. Related to the Stony Point area, we were able to secure a hub location that's going to give us a lot of coverage. It is on Vista Point Drive. It's hard to tell from a flat map, but the topology of the land there was very difficult for us to hit directly from Stony Point. The point that we're placing the hub equipment is on top of a mountain with a bunch of trees behind it, so it'll allow us to serve the homes and farms that are in front of it there. Next slide, please. As far as Stony Point itself goes, we're going through the permitting process. We'll have to get our electrical work done, and then have the tower climbers install the equipment. We wanted to save a little bit of time in January by having the link radio at Lenny's installed already. They'll have to go back and re-path it, but it's already up there and mounted and configured. So once we get through the permitting process and put in the electrical, we'll have the tower climbers up there installing that equipment as well. Next slide. Got a bit of good news a couple few weeks ago, not as a part of our original project, but there's a property owner who is willing to install a 70-foot private tower on their land. They've already constructed and erected the tower. They're painting it so that a way it's resistant to rust and the other elements. As soon as that's done, we're hopeful that by next week we'll be able to put some equipment up there and allow us to hit at least 15 and allow us to hit at least fifteen homes that we weren't otherwise able to see because of the hills and the mountains there. Next slide. So we are getting to the end of this phase of the project. Once Stony Point is erected, we're still working out locations in the northeast portion of the county. We've been in communications with a landowner who has a private tower up there that would perfectly cover that area, but we haven't been able to come to agreement quite yet. Well, we're continuing doing that, and as of today, we have a two-hundred-and-thirty-three customers connected in Alexander County. Since the last time that I spoke in front of you, we had one full-time employee and a technician that was coming up two or three days a week. We currently have two full-time employees, one of them being a technician who both live and work in Alexander County. And we're looking at ringing on a third person to serve a couple extra days so we can increase the pace of installations on our side.
All right, good news.
Very good.
Making progress.
Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Increased installation, do you have backlog going of installations?
We do. And even this, today's Monday, we have three or four more scheduled for this week already, and we're continuing to schedule more. One of the things that we were facing, some customers require a pole to be put in their yard to get service. What we had previously been doing was waiting for the customers to install the pole themselves. But instead of doing that now, we're offering open broadband, we'll do the installation for an extra fee to shorten the cycle of time that it takes. And some customers might go to the Lowe's or Home Depot and not know exactly what they're looking for. So by eliminating that headache from them, we're hoping to increase the process. And we've got about twenty people whom we were waiting for the poles that we're going to now be able to shorten that install cycle.
Sounds good. Keep on working and going, so.
Will do.
And just as a quick follow-up to that, as this project begins to enter the stages, the final stages to wrap up, we recognize as the county that there are still gaps in areas of the county that are unserved. Open broadband is certainly working strategically to try to fill those gaps. But I wanted to bring to the board's attention a upcoming grant program that was announced recently by the state. NC Session Law twenty-two-one-dash-one-eighty appropriates around four-hundred million dollars from the American Rescue Plan Act to a new grant program that they're going to be offering called the Completing Access to Broadband Grant, or CAB grant. This grant will allow North Carolina counties to partner with NC DIT to fund broadband deployment projects in unserved areas of the county. NC DIT will work with the counties to identify the eligible project areas that are unserved and then help us to develop an RFP document to send out competitive proposal, proposal request for private providers to come in and partner with us to provide that service. There will be a match required from the counties. It's not been announced yet what that percentage or portion will be. And counties are capped currently at four-hundred, or excuse me, four million in aggregate CAB funding per year. So it's a pretty big opportunity, depending on what kind of investment we're able to make. This grant program is slated to launch in spring of twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two. So they're currently still developing the requirements and the program specifics. It's also good to note that this complements the GREAT Grant. You've probably heard of the GREAT Grant. That's another opportunity that's federally funded for private providers to come in and serve unserved areas. So just wanted to bring that as an information item to the board.
Okay. Are you going to try to go after that grant, or is that something that we?
Yes, yes, definitely.
Eventually, we should be able to get most of the county into broadband, do you think?
Yeah, I think between what we're working with, with open broadband, the types of services they're providing, as well as other service providers in the area offering you fiber and things like that, we should get a pretty good footprint coverage in the, in the county. So we're doing all we can to help further that along.
All right.
I have one more question.
Yeah.
You said that negotiations, negotiations had not finalized or came to an agreement on a tower site in the northeast quadrant of Alexander County?
Yes, sir.
How far off are you talking on, is that something you see coming together or not coming together?
They're willing to sell us the mountain.
Do what?
They're willing to sell us the mountain, and that's not something that we're interested in. So we're still working on it. Sir?
You're far off, then?
I'm pretty persistent, so it may take a bit, a little bit more gnawing, but I think we'll get, get them done. If we're not interested and no one else is interested, at least you can make some revenue by renting us tower space on a property you're using occasionally for hunting every couple of years, so.
That's a very heavily underserviced area.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And David mentioned the GREAT Grant. That's a program that's been in existence, but one of the changes that they made this year is that internet service providers are now allowed to directly apply for those funds as well. And we will be applying for some on behalf of the county as well, so we can continue to expand our footprint.
Okay.
Sir?
Thank you. Moving on to item number six, Alexander Soil and Water Emergency Watershed Protection Projects and Other Debris Removal Funding PowerPoint. Recognize Ms. Pam Bowlen.
Thank you. See, I might have to pull the microphone down a little bit. And Chad and I didn't practice, and I've got quite a few slides, so we'll just do the best we can. All right, thank you for having me tonight. I will say Rick has graciously updated y'all over the past year. I do have a little bit to talk before each slide change, so I will let you know. Sorry. So did want to tell you the Emergency Watershed Protection Program. This one was something that came about, it's nationwide, but while we're interested in it, it's resulting from the November twenty-twenty Hurricane Ada flooding is why Alexander County sought after this funding. And so stream debris has been an issue always, and soil and water conservation is interested in it because it's causing loss of land and it's, it has the potential to take out bridges and things like that. So we know that happened here. I do want to say that this particular program, to be eligible, you have to have a potential loss of life. And that could be a property loss because of bridges going out. Or you'll see in the case, we had potential loss of life at the campground in the future. So the next slide goes on to our sites that were eligible. First off, we went, worked with emergency management to identify sites because there was, you know, a lot of, lot of things going on in the county then. A lot of, a lot of roads closed and things like that. So anything that was already closed, the road was already out, was not eligible. So this was sites that the road could go out in the next storm from the debris. And I'm talking about mainly woody debris, trees that fell down in the storm. So we worked with emergency management to ID sites and had a long list of sites, went out with the NRCS, which is our federal partner, engineers to actually determine which sites were eligible. We had three sites that they deemed eligible based on those criteria. So the first one is Hauser Farms off of Sulfur Springs Roads. This is just some of the debris they had. This is standing right before the bridge. They had a car there, you can see. You can go to the next slide. This is debris further upstream. You can see the water line on the Mill Building, just how high the water got there. And so this one, you know, is an issue. It actually blocked the four-box culvert. I wish I would have put a picture of that in there. We don't have it from when it was blocked, but the culvert itself flooded their parking lot. And they had some equipment or paid for some equipment to remove enough debris to get it unclogged. But, and we're not able to pay back for anything that was already done. So the next site is the Lackey Farm off of Osvald Dam Road. I do have a picture of the dam in there, but I don't want to confuse anybody. We cannot remove the dam, we cannot fix the dam. That's just for reference for site and for some of the debris around the dam. So this one, this one's on Lower Little River. It's just, I'll show, next slide, just showing some of the piles. There are a few piles above the dam, but most of it's below the dam up to Osvald Dam Road. And if you remember, like I said, it's the potential for that debris to move downstream in the next storm and take a bridge out. So. All right. And there's Osvald Dam Road Bridge. So this is kind of just progression down towards the bridge. All right, the next one, the third site was Jimmy Lambert's site on Hookerberry Ridge Road. This site is actually just upstream of the campground, and that's what the immediate threat to life was with, just because there was a campground there, whether it goes back or not, that's not in consideration actually for our purposes. It was deemed eligible since it was there. Okay, next slide. This is just going downstream. And next slide. As you see, this one's kind of down towards the end of the property, closer to the campground. You have trees actually all the way across the stream that have the potential to really, you know, stop and dam up there. And from, from what I understand, that's what happened there. And with a lot of the bridges that went out was a lot of just debris getting blocked, basically. Okay, next slide. So the program status for EWP, and I might should have put this at the beginning, but I, I really wanted to show you the pictures because, like I said, Rick has been updating you on this, and I appreciate that. But I had, I knew that y'all would want to see pictures, and I apologize, I might have should have came sooner. But basically, soil and water requested this program back in December of twenty-twenty. And that was when we found out we had sites, and we had a time limit that we had to do it in, in order to be eligible because it's an emergency program. And Alexander County is the sponsor for these funds. So we don't, we don't have the funds as soil and water to be able to sponsor it. So that means Alexander County is responsible for paying for the projects, but then they'll get paid back. So we currently are out for bids again, and I say the third time, it's really the second time because the first time was just extended. And this is because the, we only got two bids back in the fall when we did requests, and they were too high. So the plan is to bring back the winning bid to the March seventh meeting. And if it's more than what we've been, you know, allotted, that we'll, we plan to ask for the federal and the state for that much more funds. So we have seventy-nine thousand five hundred for construction for these three sites together. And what we're finding out is that's probably pretty low. However, this is, this is a new program for us, and actually for this end of the state, it's, it's pretty new. This is something that's done more in eastern North Carolina. So, you know, asked around for ideas on even doing the bids and things like that. And, you know, we're, I don't want to say guinea pigs, but we're one of the first ones in the western North Carolina to do it in a long time. There's going to be a whole lot more because of haywood and everything that they've had from Tropical Storm Fred and all recently. But I'm getting my head, head of myself just a little. I should say the cost estimate was straight from the engineer, though. So we, we did not come up with that. The cost estimate is what we asked for, and, and we got it. So that was, you know, at the time, what we thought was the best to go on, and we couldn't change that. We had to go with what the engineer said. So our bids were a good bit higher than that, so that's why we have put it out again. And we have asked the federal folks and the state folks if there's a good chance of getting more money. And they have said, yes, there is, because there is more money. However, we didn't want to just bring the lower of the other two bids to you when we didn't feel like they were reasonable. And just to be honest, they, you know, probably needed a little more clarification on what was required. And one thing was that they included hauling off to the landfill, and we found out since that that's not required. Of course, if we could get that done, that would be nice for the landowners or chipping it, things like that. But it, it doesn't seem reasonable for what amount that we've got, definitely. But, you know, probably even when we get more funds, we're probably not going to be able to haul it off. Basically, the requirement is to get it out of the floodplain. So I should stick to my slides, too. So if we bring, bring back the winning bid to you then, because the, I didn't put on here, but the bids are due back to Western Piedmont Council of Governments by February twenty-eighth. And I'm going to skip down to that. Western Piedmont Council of Governments has a contract with the county to administer the grant because this was some funding that was available also in the grant. And since they handle grants more, large grants, large, large funding, so they're, they're actually handling it. So we're assisting them. And then I have down here, the current deadline's April fifteenth. That is the current deadline for the EWP projects themselves. So I'm pretty sure, you know, we're going to need to ask an extension for that, which we've been told that shouldn't be a problem. But I don't know, I'm going to talk about some other funding, too, but I don't know if anybody wants to ask questions about that project first or if you want me to just continue on?
Just keep rolling.
Okay.
We'll get into that thing.
Okay. All right, next slide. So the next slide, basically, we couldn't fund a lot of projects. So like I said, we worked with the emergency management to determine some sites, and we just did site visits, drive-by sites, too, because we knew this was a big problem. But the state came up with some more funding that were basically called disaster funds or state emergency funds is what I'm calling it. And these were projects that were not eligible for EWP, but they were still resulting from Tropical Storm Ada. So these funds are actually going to be handled through Carolina Land and Lakes. We needed a sponsor for them as well. We had ten sites that we asked for, streamed debris removal from, and we requested, have it up there, three-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand-three-hundred-and-four dollars, but we only received about half of that, the one-seventy-four-two-eighty-seven. And I have it split up because part of that is going to go towards administration of the grant. And honestly, we asked for the, the cap on that, it's twelve percent. So the one-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand-six-thirteen is what we would have for construction or the actual debris removal. So this has been awarded basically to us, but we are wanting to wait on our, revising our scope of work. Basically, is the next step to get the contract with Carolina Land and Lakes and the state. But since our EWP projects have come up to cost so much more than we expected, we're trying to figure out how much that's going to be approximately before we, you know, set this in stone. And it would hopefully be the same way, where you could ask for more as well. But so I'm going to fund part of the sites, we're thinking probably three of them. So I have, I do have a picture of one of the sites that's next. So this is actually adjacent to the EWP property downstream. So it's pretty bad, too, and it would be funded through the state emergency money. So that's the second pot of money or second project we're talking about. So the next slide has a new program that has come about basically because soil and water offices and districts across the state have realized that stream debris is an issue, just like I said at the beginning. It's causing major issues for all landowners, causing land to cave in, it's causing roads to go out, basically just because the debris has been there and it just keeps, you know, multiplying or added to after every storm. So this is resulting from folks talking to their legislators and saying, we need something to do maintenance. We need to help clean out the streams. And I should say, because some people are confused about this, I don't mean cutting all the trees off the stream banks because we want trees on the stream banks, we want vegetation on the stream banks. That's one of the big things soil and water encourages, to help keep the soil in place. But trees that have fallen in the stream. But trees that have fallen in the stream, that are causing the river to go different directions, or causing, you know, then causing other banks to cave in, or just blocking it up, and then causing issues when the, when the dam of the trees break. So, that, this is, this is actually a, a result of people working together, you know, talking to other legislators, and getting a new program started. So, this program, though, will run somewhat like the other two I mentioned, in that it needs to go through a sponsor also. So, it's either, and the sponsor has to be a county, city, or nonprofit organization. So, we're hoping that the county would agree to be the sponsor. It is 100% paid back. This one in particular is not tied to a particular storm, so it doesn't have to be debris from Hurricane Ada. So, that's, everybody on our current list is still eligible, but there's a lot more people that are eligible. So, that, for that reason, our board, our Soil and Water Board decided, you know, to advertise and open it up for, you know, other folks that have had debris that, you know, may not have contacted us before. So, interested landowners must contact our office by February 18th, and I'll say we've had a lot of interest already, because there's a lot of debris. But that's okay, we're, we're going to check on all of them, get back with everybody. But basically, I have on here, the division online applications due March 31st. That's when we have to actually submit the application online. And I hope and plan to bring the amount from whatever sites we visit, we'll come up with a cost estimate based on new numbers we're hearing about, and hopefully from our EWP numbers, too, to bring to you with the total amount we want to ask for. And I don't expect that we would get that amount, you know, I don't expect we'll get everything we ask for. But, you know, I want to bring it back to you before that March 31st, if possible. So, we'll, basically, we'll find out, I think they said about May, hopefully, it'd be the earliest we'd find out how much we could receive, and then we'll have to revise, you know, our scope of work based on that, how much we receive. And I have on here, this last one is wrong. It says 5% can go towards administration. 5% of the total for the whole state can go towards administration, but what I've found out since, since I did this PowerPoint is, actually, it's the same as our other funding. It's up to 15% per project. So, in talking with Rick, we hopefully would go through, you know, have some help with administration for that as well. So, I said we may know by May or June. There's also, I do want to mention this, I don't have it on there, there's also a streamed debris removal best management practice that's coming online in July for our agriculture cost share program. And that will help with our, some of our smaller ag sites, because that'll be through our regular program where the landowner pays for it, and then it's paid back from the state. It's 75%. And it does have a $15,000 cap, though, so it'll be mainly for the smaller sites, but... So, I'm really not asking for approval of anything today, I'm just updating you, but I figure there may be some questions. Like I said, I apologize if it didn't come to you sooner, but I know more now about these other programs, too. So, any questions?
Mr. Chairman, just a comment. So, I guess the reason we missed the budget so far the first time was because of the Didn't have the right numbers, or didn't look into the right sites, or...
Or maybe they were just an engineer.
And, and my comment is, there's, what, 10 that was in the first sign-up PAM that didn't make the first cut?
Well, they were not eligible, because they didn't have the immediate threat to life. So, they, it wasn't that we didn't get enough money for them, that we only asked for the money that, of the sites that were eligible.
So, in this next round, are you going to take the ones that, that you didn't pick up the first time, or are you going to batch them with all the last ones? Because I've already had some phone calls about it.
We're, we're going to have to, because just like our regular cost share programs, we, we do our best to make a, make an unbiased, you know, no, it's not, it's not a guess, it's based on a ranking form, based on the worst water quality problem. In this case, it'd be the worst erosion problems, loss of land, stream blockage. So, the, the worst problems should get funded first. I will say, since we're talking about this, the, the first two were related to the storm, and so they did, the first one, Emergency Water Safety Protection, we didn't rank those at all, because that was federal decision, and that was, had to have the immediate threat to life. So, the second pot of money, though, we did rank those, and since they were still dealing with emergency and from the storm, it still was tied to, you know, what had been done on those other emergency sites, or felt that it, like the one that showed that's adjacent to the EWP project, felt like that was good to give them more points, because they're adjacent to it, you don't want to fix a problem and then get problem right back from debris that didn't get taken out. Also, distance to road was considered, I don't know that it'll be considered in this last one, because it's not as much about emergency as it is about stream bank erosion and just blockages in general.
One other comment I'd like to make, talk with our North Carolina State Senator, and one of his questions was, is, does a U.S. highway have more ranking than a rural road or 127 or Highway 16? Because those are the main highways that, the access for this county, if they're shut down, this county's shut down, versus a secondary road. Is that taken in consideration?
It did not in our form, but distance, it was, distance was the main thing. So, also, I will just say, since you brought that up, the smaller roads, even though they're not traveled as much, they're not as heavily built, and they would block and go out possibly faster than the large bridges or spans. So, I did, we did not take that into consideration, but that is just a thought also.
Any other questions?
I think it's going to be vitally important that you can get all the information, get together, so that we'll have a total estimate, because based on what I was told a couple weeks ago, they're really wanting this estimate, so we can get it to our state senator, so that he'll have this information. And we just need to make sure that we get a total cost of what it takes care of for all of our streams and our rivers, to try to get it as much as we can get done with the amount of money that we can probably get from Raleigh. And it'll, it'll work out real good, I think, because a lot of people have talked to him.
Yeah.
And there was a phone call last week that came, and I know that in the conversation, it's going to be vitally important to make sure we get every estimate and get everything that we can to get together, to make sure that we can do all we can do to get this funding.
I do know they, our state folks have told us, or the Division of Soil and Water is our state agency that we go through, they have, you know, told us, they don't expect there to be a second round of this money, you know, so ask for what you can, of course, to start with, and that's what we do plan to do. I don't think we're going to have any, you know, any shortage of applications, or as far as, you know, calls, like I said, we've had quite a few already. We're not going out and seeking, I'm, I'm just going to let you know, we're not going out and seeking more, because we don't have time. I mean, we're having the calls, we had like five calls today, and, you know, we're going out. So, I, I just say that to say, it's, our estimate's not going to clean up, it's not going to be for everything. And I know you, you know that, too, but just, but as we, you know, hopefully get more funding and show, if we don't get as much as we ask for, you know, because everybody across the state's asking for this money, too, that will show there's a need for it still, and hopefully they'll continue, you know, continue to fund the program.
Anything we can get, and every time we can get it, is what we need to do, so.
Yeah.
Do you have an engineer that's going back to do the estimating and looking?
No, no, this, so we're, the, the thing with the engineer, well, it's, you, you can look at different things, or mainly with the engineer's estimate before, this just hasn't been done as much in western North Carolina, honestly, was the issue, and prices have gone up and everything like that. But no, this is, this is our office. But we have had more training and discussions with, roundtable discussions with other districts in our area, and we're all working on this together, as far as everybody's trying to figure out the best way and the best cost. So, that honestly, I felt like if, if it works out that we can see what our EWP bids come in at, it's because we've advertised more, too, with this round of bid requests. So, we were advertised before, but maybe, maybe we didn't advertise quite as much. This time, David Moose has been very helpful. I mentioned emergency management's been very helpful, I wanted to thank all them for, you know, helping us. But David Moose has, you know, posted on a listserv, state listserv for us, and we've had a lot more calls about it this time. So, I'm hoping that those, those estimates will be more realistic, and so we can use that information for our county, you know, to move forward.
Okay. Get as, as much as you can, you know. I know the November 12th thing, you know, a couple of years back, that, we were almost landlocked at that time, you know, there were several roads that were, you know, that were washed out, impassable. So, it's a learning process, too, so appreciate what y'all are doing, and just let us know what you come up with.
All right.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number seven, Budget Process Calendar for Fiscal Year 22-23 Budget. Recognize County Manager, Mr. Rick French.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, it's that time again, February, February the 11th, we'll kick off our Budget Process Calendar for Fiscal Year 22-23. Budget information will be distributed to department heads, and the process will begin. Just some dates, and you have the calendar in front of you. April the 4th, the Finance Committee provides a budget printout of all the requests to my office. And with that, we'll have already received technology requests and all the other requests. Commissioners are in here, not to get into too much into details of it, but there'll be certain times where we can schedule work sessions. We, we're going to ask the school to submit their budget request by April 29th. It'll be May 2nd is when we're going to set up a meeting to submit the budget to the full board and talk about all the different programs and things that we have. And again, just follow the process through with the adoption of the budget or consideration of adoption of the budget on June the 6th. We'll also have to have a public hearing, and that would be held on May 16th. But again, you have the calendar in front of you, I just wanted to get that out tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
Do we need to vote on that?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you for the information. Moving on, item number eight, Budget Ordinance Amendments 56 through 66, and recognize Commanding Commander Rick French once again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget Amendment Number 56 is to increase the budget to cover additional fogging and cleaning procedures at county facilities, and also to increase the budget to purchase a digital sign for the County Services Center. Budget Amendment Number 57 is to increase the fire emergency services budget to begin leasing the Fairgrounds property. The fiscal year 2022 expense is estimated at $1,200 per month for June to March through June of 2022, and also to increase the fire emergency services budget for the cost of concrete pads at the Fairgrounds property to be used for the storage of trailers. And we'll be getting back in touch with you about the actual lease that's coming, be coming next month.
All right. Budget Amendment Number 58 is the budget for the payment of industrial development incentive funds for the EDC. The EDC will then disperse the incentive funds to the industries. Budget Amendment Number 59 is to increase sheriff's office budget for the receipt of insurance proceeds for a 2019 Dodge Charger that was deemed a total loss after a December 2021 wreck, and two expenses for removal of radios from two sheriff vehicles. The insurance proceeds will be used for radio maintenance and repair, and towards the purchase of a vehicle. Number 60 is to increase the Health Department Promotion Budget for a research study called the Med-South Lifestyle Study. Number 61 is to increase the EMS budget to replace the generator at the Bethlehem EMS Station. Number 62 is to budget for client payouts in the DSS Representative Payee Fund, which is a social security program where the county DSS receives and manages money for minor children and certain adults. The revenue for these two clients was received in a prior year, so the payouts are from the fund balance of the General Fund. Budget Amendment Number 63 is to adjust the multi-year grant project budget for the American Rescue Plan Special Revenue Fund, to transfer the grant funds to a separate water capital fund for accounting purposes. The American Rescue Plan Waterline Extension Capital Project Fund will be used for a multi-year budget of the water capital project. Number 64 is the budget for the local match, local match funds required of the county for the Paul Robert Chair Building Reuse Grant Project. The North Carolina Department of Commerce is providing $60,000 of grant funding. Number 65 is to adjust the multi-year capital project budget for the Courthouse Park, cost estimates for playground equipment, picnic tables, benches, and so on, as, as the project draws to a close. And again, our dedication is May 15th. Budget Amendment Number 66, and final, is to increase the budget for the fiscal year 2022 General Fund Transfer to the Park Improvements Project to cover the cost of playground equipment, picnic tables, benches, needed to complete the Courthouse Park project. Park improvements are being accounted for in a multi-year project fund. The General Fund has transferred a total of $1,491,000 to the Park Improvements Fund since 2019 fiscal year. And I'll be glad to try to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman, about the budget amendments.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Set rule amendments. Any questions?
Several. Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve Budget Item 56 through...
66.
66.
Okay, have a motion, I hear a second.
Second.
Okay, have a motion in a second. Any other questions or discussion? If there are none, I'd entertain a motion to approve with right hand raised, all in favor. Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to item number nine, Board Appointments and Reappointments, and recognize Rick French, County Manager, once again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Planning and Zoning Commission appoint Dale Fox for three years. That's the only recommendation for tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, have a motion in a second. All in favor of approval, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. This time, we'd entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda. Everyone's had a copy.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry, skipped one, getting too fast. Item number 10, Other Business County Managers Reports. Mr. French, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things to mention. One is that we're going to, we are recommending that we continue to reduce water tap fees for the rest of the '21-'22 fiscal year, and we'll do that again with our next budget year, but we're recommending that we continue on with the reduced water tap fees. Secondly, the human resource staff plan to move ahead with a pay study for all county employees. Funds are currently in the HR budget for '21-'22. And again, the dedication date for the Courthouse Park will be Sunday, May 15th, 2022, and we will dedicate our park, and we'll have a special concert. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Mr. French.
Thank you, sir.
Good information, and a lot of things we're going to... Good information, and a lot of things, we're going to be pretty busy. I think the Courthouse Park is going to be a good addition to our county. Don't know that we ever had anything like that in the county before, so it should be a good thing, and I think a lot of people will be able to use it, and that's coming up, May 15th, it's coming pretty quick, so I do see they're making good progress, anyone who's been through town, and like I said, it'd be, be good for our downtown area, so thank you for that. Okay, now we'll get to where I was a while ago. I'd entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda, everyone's had it in their faggots, a chance to look at it, I hear a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Raise your right hand, thank you, motion carries unanimously. At this point, we'll make a motion to adjourn to closed session, and we will only re-adjourn to adjourn reference to closed session NCGS 143, 318 dot 11 for economic development, contractual, and personnel information. I make that as a motion?
No.
Okay, have a second? All in favor? Thank you, gentlemen. All right, closed session, and we will re-adjourn only to adjourn, so thank you, everyone for coming out.